Hi Paul.
There we go, I am.
I'm in the Bahamas. You know, it's easy to do those virtual backgrounds.
I like my background.
This is being recorded, you set it up for recording?
Yes. Brian advised that our budget meeting should be recorded.
Oh, Alan's on, okay. So, somebody has background and you can hear another person talking. Paul, that may be your house, I'm not sure.
Let me close the door here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I can't hear anybody. Are your mics on?
My mic's on, sorry, you can't hear me?
Are your mics on?
Yes. Paul, see if you can, Mac can hear you.
Testing, one, two, three.
Barnett's is off, Barnett's is now on, I just turned it on.
One, two, three.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear any of you.
We can hear you. Can you?
Anyway, I can't hear you, I just sent you a bunch of stuff demonstrating the credibility of my email. And I'm just telling you right now, you better check with Brian, this is a big, big mistake on your part. So, you can look through, you'll find it credible. And that's all I'm gonna say, it's a mistake to read this into the record. Especially at this time, I mean coronavirus. I mean, for example, what if a person did make a mistake on one of their correspondence? That's happened all the time. I didn't, but let's say that happened. So, you're gonna diss me, you're gonna gaslight me during the coronavirus crisis. Again, I can't hear you.
Well, can you?
Maybe it's a blessing.
Paul, you're the host, right?
Yes.
Disconnect Mac.
Maureen's mic is working, but I can't hear it.
Can you see the chat?
Hold on, let me try and get this going.
He can't hear you, so you can't ask.
Paul, this should really be up to you, you can pull down the participants and make sure that everyone's mic is on. And if it's mine.
Paul, can you hear me? Let me see.
And Alan.
You can hear me, great, thank you.
David, I don't see anything, your mic is not muted by me here.
I'm telling him to exit and re-enter.
Alright, I got Maureen now.
Oh, good, I was gonna tell you to.
Yes, I've got everybody, did you hear what I said?
Yes.
Yes, sorry, there's another.
I didn't hear what anybody said.
We didn't say anything.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I didn't hear what anybody said, did you hear what I said about the letter?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm getting an echo, god damn it.
Exit and start again, exit and start again. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you, David, yes.
Okay, so another slam.
David, why don't you exit and join again, because maybe it's the connection you have, why don't you exit and join again?
My connection's fine, can everyone hear me, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so everyone can hear me.
We've always been able to hear you, you could not hear us.
Correct, now I hear you.
Okay, you said things in echo a minute ago, I'm suggesting.
I had an echo, so anyway, I just sent you all the information that you should research before. The article that I referred to, there's numerous articles, the same exact thing. Brian told me that I have the right to send out the mayor's newsletter. There's a disclaimer. And so I got all my quotes from this one Chronicle, which I already sent you. I had a communication back and forth through the Orange County with Steve Gross about actually doing the letter-writing campaign, which I sent you. And you're making a big mistake doing this, this is really not cool. It's gonna really look bad for you guys.
Okay, so, may I suggest we call the meeting to order? We do have participants on the line, I do believe.
Why are you calling the meeting to order?
Because we have, a meeting was called.
I think it's up to me to do that.
Right, I'm suggesting that you call the meeting to order, because we have five trustees on the line.
Mm-hmm, okay, I call this meeting to order, let's rise for the pledge.
So, may I?
In terms of the roll call, McQ, are you there, I can't see you.
He's muted right now, Paul. So I.
Alan, I don't know where Alan is, but anyway, so, yeah, I just received a letter from you guys. Criticizing my mayor's newsletter and the information I put out, and called it incorrect and inaccurate. And as I just said, I sent over a bunch of emails that demonstrate that what I put in the paper was really right out of the newspapers. And I put in information from Glenn Gross, who initially spoke to me and told me what Newhouse, what happened to Newhouse, he's from Orange County. And doing a letter-writing campaign. And I sent you an email from Brian saying that you have no right to interfere or mess with my mayor's newsletters. And a few other things, so I'm really advising you that it would be a mistake to read this into the record, you're welcome to do it. But it's not gonna fare well. There's a number of people that are writing on this subject. And you can make a mistake, I'm not saying I did, but you can make a mistake, but does that deserve what you guys are doing? I didn't see any of you doing anything for the coronavirus, not a single thing, you're supposed to lead. Oh, you're laughing?
Yes.
What did you do in terms of sending, leading the community in the coronavirus, this crisis we have right now? Have you communicated with the public?
Mac, would you like me to answer that question?
Now that I finished the sentence?
Sorry?
Yes, please.
If it were not for us, and each of the other trustees can confirm this, there would not have been a preparedness plan in place.
Oh god, I already complimented you on that in writing numerous places, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, look, I complimented you in numerous places for that preparedness plan.
That is not what I'm asking for, I'm asking for accurate information, we have done nothing, if it were not for us, there would not have been a preparedness plan. We don't need to be complimented, we don't need to stand out and say we've done all these things, we just need not to be told, the public to be told that we've been standing down and doing nothing.
Who said that? I'm taking into account the preparedness plan, so hold on. I'm talking about, oh, okay, the faces are too much, look, I don't understand you guys, I don't know whether it's, I don't know what it is. But I really would look again, if you wanna read that letter, I'd take the time to do it and then read it Thursday. That's my advice.
Thank you, anybody have any comments, would you like me, I thought the best thing to do is go through the budget and then we'll read the letter. But others can disagree or agree.
You're not even gonna take today's. Here's my view, this is, we have, this is a meeting that was called to deal with the budget. We have a budget to get through, I think that should be the order of priority. The letter speaks for itself, I would say, very briefly, it does not in any way impinge on your ability now and in the future to promote your personal views. The point of the letter is that it is not a village view. And as.
It doesn't say it's a village view.
If you strip the stuff around your letter that indicates that it is a village letter, you're perfectly free to say whatever you'd like to say. That in substance is what that letter communicates.
Excuse me, there is a disclaimer, did you read it?
So, the question on the floor was whether or not we should read the letter now or deal with the budget first.
No, that's not the question on the floor. The question on the floor is, are you going to read the letter today at any time, or are you gonna wait two days, do the research, and then read it the next meeting on Thursday? Or do you not have the courage to do that? These are like super sneaky early morning meetings, late night stuff, it's just, it's not going well. And, you know, it's really funny, because for almost, well, all the newsletters I've been doing about the Corona, I haven't had a single trustee ever comment on it? Or call me, except Maureen saying, this is a nice one, okay? So, no one, and you don't have the courage to come up to me in the first one, or the second one, or the third one, and say something to me. And then you come up with a letter like this, it's just not the way to run a show.
David, we went through extensive discussions on the letters dealing with the preparedness plan and the communications to the public about that. There is a lot of dialogue back and forth on that, so to say that.
I'm not referring to that, I'm referring to these newsletters. Hey, look, you guys do whatever you want. You do whatever you want. You know, though I did get an email from Maureen a half hour before the meeting saying, I'm giving you a heads up, we're reading this at the meeting. And then you expect me to come in and not worry about it, not to, no, not to say anything.
At point of fact, it was an hour, but nevertheless.
Another stab in the back, it's unbelievable, why didn't you just call me? Why didn't you just call me and have this discussion with me last week? Okay, what's the problem, are you looking for ways to discredit me?
Your letter went out the day before yesterday.
Pardon me?
Because your communication went out the day before yesterday. So, we couldn't call.
I'm not talking about, oh, so it's this one?
Yes.
Okay, and what about this one, I just sent you all the emails supporting it? Including articles, what?
Paul, would you reiterate the major point here, and by the way, your information is dated, and that's a big issue.
Oh, oh my god. Information with this virus is dated every day.
Mac, we attend emergency management meetings every day, and Steve Newhouse, at my question, basically said yesterday, do not write your senators. In the beginning, it would have been helpful to have.
Excuse me, excuse me, I was advised by someone that works there to write the letters, what do you care? Look at it, I sent you the email, he says, do a letter-writing thing.
Ten days ago, so.
No, what?
So, the point of this.
Look at the email from Steve Gross, look at the email from Steve Gross, and you will find that he advised me to do a letter-writing campaign.
And you're welcome to do that, but not in an official capacity, and that's the point of the letter.
It's not in official capacity, there's a disclaimer on the bottom, okay, look, I've said my piece, you guys can do what you want.
So, just to correct the record, some of your communications have a disclaimer, some don't.
Correct, this one has a disclaimer.
The ones on the village website don't have a disclaimer, your letter has our banner, it says Village of Tuxedo Park at the top. It has copyright Village of Tuxedo Park. And it says, and it uses your village email, so that to anybody who gets that would say, this is a village communication. So, you're perfectly free, perfectly free, as we've said in our letter to you, to take this campaign out personally. And carry it forward, I mean, we may or may not agree or disagree with the message, I think I personally disagree with it. But you are certainly free to communicate that as you see fit, and nobody's saying not to.
Alright, so what's this thing that talks about how the information is not correct, and accuses me of putting information out there that's not accurate? I mean, and you're gonna leave that in? That's, why don't you just say what you said? Why don't you just say that, Paul, what you just said? And by the way, why didn't you say that to me last week? But anyway, that's another point.
Because your letter is written March 29th, not last week.
What about, oh, so it's this particular content of this particular letter? It's not all the other letters, you're happy with those, it's that you disagree with the content of this letter? Is that correct?
Personally, I was not happy with many of the contents of the previous letter, but this letter pushed it over the edge, based on the information we have from the county executive. And also the sentiment in that letter. So, that's, and it's not, I just want the community to know, it's your letter, not the board's letter, and that's all the letter that we're sent to you says. Make it clear that it's your opinion, your letter, the disclaimer on the bottom is nice, it's not that conspicuous, there's other things in your mayor's updates that lead people to believe it's a village official letter, and it's not. And that's the only point of it.
And why are you gonna, why did you put in the letter that it's inaccurate information, that it was debunked 10 days ago or whatever? I have the articles right there.
Paul, do you wanna address that?
Certainly, so, those articles were written, it talked about a particular rate of transmission in a particular community.
Correct.
Orange County Health Commissioner, who is our leader in this area, said that is incorrect. And that original reporting, or the original communication by the doctor in question, was irresponsible. And that rate of transmission was incorrect.
Well, I'm not judging, I just took it out of the newspaper.
That's all that letter, that's all our letter says, it says what the county health commissioner said. So, when the letter, when a letter goes out under village letterhead, saying copyright by the Village of Tuxedo Park as an official village letter, right? And it is running counter to what our health professionals are saying, we, I think, would like to distance ourselves from that communication. And you are perfectly, again, free to communicate that as you see fit, but it's not a village communication, and it does not reflect well on us, I think.
Really, have you gotten calls? Have you been, it doesn't reflect well, what happened, give me some evidence?
I am.
And it doesn't reflect well on you?
I am not gonna go into that.
Yeah, because you don't have any. Obviously, alright, well, listen, I mean, to expect me to attend this meeting now after this incredible insult from my own trustees, I'll catch up later, I'll read the, I'll watch the screen later. After you have your meeting, so I can bring myself up to speed on the budget, so I'll be signing off.
Mac, it's a budget meeting, okay. So, there's still a picture of Mac on, he's still signed in, I think. Mac, it's a budget meeting, I implore you, I don't think, I think this is an extremely important topic, you really should be in this meeting. And we are all trying to do the best for the village, and we want the village to understand accurate information. And we implore you, because it looks like you're still on the phone, we implore you to sign back in.
I think we all voiced our views, I think that this is a public meeting. The majority of people who are listening, there are some people listening, I think we ought to read the letter into it. And move on, so I make a motion that we read the letter.
Second. We don't need a motion, but does everybody agree with that?
No. I think we should do, I think we should move on with our budget meeting.
Period?
And entertain that motion at the end of the meeting.
Alan? Yeah, no, Paul, just to be clear, I mean, I would support what Alan's saying, because there's confusion, because as Alan's pointing out, people are listening on the phone.
They have no idea what's going on, they have no idea the basis for it, they have no idea that the distinction, what criticism really is, and what we're talking about. And I think it's important, we have a valid point, that this is, there's a difference between a private communication and an official communication.
I'm convinced.
So I. What's that?
He agrees with you. Alan McQ, you're on mute. And you're also, the view of you is obstructed.
I'm here, I'm, let me.
Alan McQ. And he's, and your view on your phone is muted as well, so your audio is muted as well.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, first and foremost, this meeting was never called to order, because all we did was said the pledge of allegiance, to the best of my knowledge, attendance was not called, is that correct?
Attendance was called, I think.
Alright, so I wasn't in attendance then?
Well, let's just call it ten.
Alright, alright, so, yeah, my personal opinion is, let's do this in order, we originally said we were gonna do this, which is, this is a budget workshop of paramount importance. And to, I think, everybody in the village is what their taxes are gonna be, the potential for tax increases, etc. So, I personally would like to start there, with regard to the communication, unfortunately, I couldn't communicate, or none of you could hear me. I do think we have been concerned, I think the straw that broke the camel's back was the misguided missive with regard to our emergency preparedness plan that we all worked on collectively. And that at the end of it, there was this assertion for amity and grief, which we all vehemently opposed. And the mayor decided to ignore our advice and put it in the newsletter, that to me was the catalyst why we had to take this action. And as soon as a couple residents responded to the mayor, then he retracted the statement, making it appear that it was his idea. So, it was misdirection, miscommunication there, which I found appalling. Then, on top of that, the newsletter or the missive that came out on Sunday, I had enormous problems with, especially in light of the fact that Maureen, Paul, myself, and Alan call in to the Orange County call with Steve Newhauser. And the day that doctor reported that, it was refuted and then discounted the following day by the Orange County Health Commissioner. So, I do think we do have a basis for doing what we're doing, so that's my two cents with regard to that.
So, Alan, Paul and Alan Barnett and I think we should just end this matter by reading the letter into the record at this point, because people are not understanding clearly what we're asking for. And in light of that previous discussion, you articulated it very well, all we're asking is that any official communications from the village be from the board, approved by the board. And that the mayor can write whatever he wants on it, but there is personal views, it has to be clearly stated. And any official insignia or anything that would lead the constituents or the residents to believe it's an official communication should be removed from his email. So, we should just read the letter and then close that matter and then go on to the very important business of the budget. I will also text Mac and ask him to come back, because as a mayor, I think he's got, one of the highest priorities is understanding and asking questions on the budget. And rolling up the sleeves and figuring out how we're gonna be able to afford the things we need to be able to afford with the minimum tax increase. So, if everybody agrees, I'm gonna read the letter, and then we can, I'll text Mac to come back on. Is that okay?
Okay. Smile.
Sorry? Okay, Dear Mayor McFadden, this is dated March 31st, 2020. We read with disappointment and concern your March 29th from the mayor's desk. The information attributed to Dr. Zelenko, Zelenko, about the, and apologize if I pronounce his name wrong, about the transmission rate of COVID-19 in KJ has been debunked. And in fact, walked back by this doctor days ago. The Orange County Health Commissioner has called the extrapolation to the rate of transmission quoted in your letter incorrect, and its publication by Zelenko highly res. Yesterday, the county executive confirmed whatever may have been accomplished 10 days ago, he does not recommend taxpayers' rights to the governor or the legislators on this subject at this time. We want to make clear that whatever your personal views, the use of village resources and a village impromptuure to promote these views is inappropriate and should cease. That from the mayor's desk until very recently has served a useful role in disseminating timely information to the village residents who choose to subscribe. Many, if not most, posts were captioned from the Board of Trustees, and the subject and content benefited from being the subject of an informed board discussion prior to publication. Our residents have come to trust this medium as a source of reliable information. Lately, however, you have taken to this medium to promote personal messages which do not necessarily reflect the views or policy of our village government, the above being the latest example. You are, of course, free to speak as you like, but you're not free to do so using village resources or in ways that lead residents into thinking you are speaking on behalf of the village. The use of the Village of Tuxedo Park banner and picture, which adorns our website, the availability of past postings, and a subscription offer on the village website. The copyright notice referring to content being copyrighted by the Village of Tuxedo Park, as well as the use of your village email for a personal campaign of letter-writing or other personal purposes should cease immediately. At the same time, particularly in these trying times, it is important that the village continue to have the tools for communicating on village matters by email to interested residents. And these tools not be personally held by one official. We therefore request that the from the mayor's desk email subscription list in electronic format be immediately provided to our village clerk Debbie Matthews. We look forward to your anticipated cooperation, very truly yours, Deputy Mayor McQ, Deputy Mayor McQ, trustee Paul Gluck, trustee Alan Barnett, trustee Maureen Coe, the end. Okay.
Alright.
Moving on to the budget.
Moving on to the budget. Basically, the preliminary budget that was sent out to everybody on March 27th currently shows a shortfall for the fiscal, upcoming fiscal year of 2020. currently shows a shortfall for the fiscal, upcoming fiscal year 2020, 2021 of $210,000. Our current unallocated surplus as of May 31st, 2019 was $644,000. And if you recall, we drew that down at the end of last year in order to stay under the tax cap by $232,000. So the discussions last year at this time were we were going to draw down the unallocated surplus to what the controller had advised us was acceptable, but not something that would jeopardize our credit rating. Because obviously we are doing a bond issuance this current year as a result of the INI that we are undertaking. And we should be going out to bid on that probably May or June of this year. So that, that's where we stand there. So I, I, I think a good way to kind of start this off is, you know, I'm just going to kind of give you a brief overview and then we can go into the minutia. With regard to our CapEx items for the 2020-21 budget, the police have a replacement of a police vehicle. All our police vehicles have in excess of 70,000 miles. This year, if you look in the current budget, you'll see we spent a lot of money on maintenance, double what we had prior years as a result of the wear and tear on these vehicles. The DPW had the replacement of their international assault truck. As you all probably remember, there was a bit of an accident down by the front gate where Dan was driving the truck and the front rim snapped as a result of corrosion and everything. So there is a safety issue there. As I mentioned earlier on, we have the phase two of the INI project that has finally, we've got, Maureen was instrumental in working through and getting the EFC grant. We got the grant over a year ago. We got extended. The deadline was May 31st. We got that extended this year. We finally are, we're awaiting newsletter, but we expect that to be forthcoming. Then the engineers will be preparing the bid document and everything. When we originally filed the grant application, we were thinking this would be around three quarters of a million dollars. We have put in the budget $122,000 dollar spend for the upcoming fiscal year. As a reference point, we had the same amount in the budget for this year, of which we've used 50, approximately 15K on engineer, engineer expense responding to both the DEC and the EFC with regard to moving this project along. Fourth error where we have a large CapEx is with regard to lakes management. As you'll recall, we, with regard to lakes management, we have $150K dollar expense forecast in the budget for the upcoming year. This year we had 140K, of which 100K goes in the water fund because that's dealing exclusively for Tuxedo Lake. And 50K is going into the general fund and that's with regard to pond number three and the Weewaw. With regard to budget assumptions, and I don't want to divulge too much with regard to salaries and everything, but we have our DPW contract and our police contract expiring May 31st. We have assumed a price escalation in both of those. And you'll see that in the spreadsheet that's attached. With regard to general staff, we do, we have not implicitly put anything in there, but obviously we have staffing changes going on there, which are going to change the math also. The one thing I should point out with regard to the police budget is we are light on one area as a result of an employee still being out on workers' comp. And the assumption was that employee would, would return for the upcoming fiscal year. And obviously that is a question mark. And as a kind of a roundabout figure, I estimate that's around, costs us 10K a month if the employee doesn't return with regard to finding other staffing to do the job. So that kind of frames that issue. Going back to the daily Steve Newhauser concerns, he highlighted on the call that he suspended or he was recommending all villages and towns suspend their CapEx. The highlighted thing is county sales tax has fallen off the cliff. As a reference point, last year we received $105,000 as a, from the county with regard to that. Currently, we're at $85,000. Likelihood of us receiving much more in the, our fourth quarter is relatively low. And the question is, what should we be forecasting for next fiscal year? Second point is state aid mortgage tax. That's a $25,000 line item. We've only received $13,000 this year. Likelihood of that continuing and the strength of the housing market and the, is a question mark there. And then other line item where is Tuxedo Park non-resident tax. You know, fewer people coming into the park, fewer people wanting to spend money on tax. So there could be some negative things there. On a more positive note, with regard to this fiscal year, where we have underspent and our projections coming into the end of fiscal year is we will have underspent by around $120,000. So what, what does that really mean? We budgeted 232K that we were taking out of our unallocated surplus. We can basically add back 120K into that. So basically we're drawing down 112K of unallocated surplus we can add back. But the bottom line is, and the issue we need to discuss and resolve is where are we going to come up with $100,000 worth of savings? Or are we going to have to go above the tax cap? That, that is the million dollar question. So hopefully I've somewhat framed the issue. And then, you know, I'm not sure how we or you would collectively like to move forward on the discussion. It might be a good idea, and I'm not sure if you're happy with this, Paul, to discuss the lakes, lakes management, what our thoughts are and what the recommendations the lake manager is. Is that okay?
But before we go to answer that, I have a couple of questions. Could we just address the questions before we go on to?
We certainly can.
And, and, and these are, could you direct me to the line item, because I thought it was a different number, to the line item from appropriation of previous, appropriation of surplus? It looks like here we, we have budgeted for last year, forgetting about INI. Well, well, actually adding the INI together.
Yeah, you, you got two numbers, the 72 and the 160.
So that's 232 that we have not, we have not used to date.
No, that's, that, that was a filler we put in last year's budget and took out of the unallocated surplus in order not to exceed the tax cap.
Right. So yeah, I'm sorry. That's what I'm, I'm saying. Yes, that is a filler that goes in, but we haven't, we've had, and this is the part that I'm a little confused about. We haven't used, according to the year-to-date budget, right? We haven't had to dip into, well, obviously the INI project is, you know, we will in the future, so that's easy. But the $160,000, so we haven't, haven't had to use the $160,000 surplus.
Well, we're, we've, we're eating into it.
Because the year-to-date does, through March 27th.
Yes. And then I forecasted out using deltas on what we think. So what, maybe I'll go through the delta. Do you want to know what the deltas are? And then maybe that one? Okay, the deltas are, on our miscellaneous category, we had a tune of $26,000 positive. We didn't spend money on the deer call, 10K positive. We overestimated, and it's now a hard number, the New York State Retirement Fund, we're $21,000 under budget. Given the, the lack of a winter, we're $20,000 under budget on snow removal. With regard to INI, we spent around $15,000 or $13,000 on engineering. So we're under budget by 105K. Against that, we've got legal fees with regard to the King Dootson matter, that's around 15K. We've got a, a material drop in the sales tax. We've got a material drop in the mortgage tax. We've got a drop in tuxedo park tags. And then obviously the question is, we have you know, a contingent liability with regard to the booth and whether the village is going to fund it by $20,000. And that has to be, you know, is that a hard number? Because a couple of contingencies still haven't been met, but that's nevertheless an issue. So that's the additional one.
So this is really what I'm asking, sorry, Alan. And I'm trying to get to what we're going to use, what's going to be remaining. You said, I thought you said we're going to have a net-net $120,000 variance to budget is what you projected.
So we're going to be under budget by 120K. So if you take our 644, which is our unallocated surplus on May 31st, 90, add the 120, then we get 764. So that's what on, we're currently forecasting based upon the financials through March 27th, 20, or 2020, our unallocated surplus as of May 31st, 20 will be approximately 760K.
Perfect. And of that, it looks like the tentative budget doesn't allocate, and maybe I'm missing it, any of the surplus.
No. What, what we were trying to do was highlight what the hole is. And the issue is, if, you know, we're, we're getting back 120K because we're going to be under budget, but we have a $210,000 hole. So we have $90,000 that we have to figure out where we can trim, or if we choose not to trim, we have to go over the, exceed the tax cap and deal with it that way.
Got it. Thanks.
That, that's the crux of the issue.
Okay, thanks. And it does not include the booth, the $20,000 booth amount?
The, the $20,000 booth amount is within that number right now.
Oh, okay. So the 90.
This fiscal year's budget. So if we choose, as a result of what's going on, on the world events and the uncertainty there, not to spend that, that'll give us an additional 20,000. So it will reduce our need to go over the tax cap by $20,000.
But the new budget doesn't include the booth expenditures. So.
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Can I ask one question before the light?
Yeah.
The, does a booth include anything to repair that keep, which is now been subject, I think, to a leaks and rodents and a complaint by the Health Commission, isn't it?
We, we, we've had complaints for the Health Commissioner with regard to potential mold, water quality and, and the rodent issue. The answer to your question is no. That, once it quote-unquote dries up, the roofers meant to come and try to remediate and resolve that issue. With regard to the water, that's been taken care of by our DPW or our water department, I should say. So I think we're going to get a clean bill of health with regard to the water. With regard to that, it, you're basically, it's a battle of scarce resources. We have a residual amount left from the booth insurance and the Bruno land sale, which was earmarked for that. The, the booth is compete, sorry, the keep is competing with the booth for scarce resources. And my own personal opinion is we have to create a clean, healthy work environment for all our officers. So first and foremost, the dollars have to be allocated to create that clean, safe, healthy work environment for the police. And then we can see what dollars are left that can then go back to the booth once all the conditions are met. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Do you have an estimate of how much that's likely to be?
I do not. Paul, did you want to just kind of give a 30,000 feet overview with regard to?
Let me just, let me just try and ask sort of a question to make a comment about where we, where we sort of are before we go into that. So bottom line really is that we have a $210,000 hole. If you want to stay under the cap and 120, based on best estimates we now have, 120 of that 210 will be used, can be filled by surplus. And the assumption we keep our surplus at the same level as it was at the end of last year, which is about a 14 or 15% level based on the budget.
Correct. And, 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 sorry, go ahead.
So the one additional item, I think that if we're trying to, you know, sort of frame our best estimate right now, we do have sales tax, right?
Yeah.
And that assumption, sales tax is still at 90 in our, in our budget down from 105?
Correct.
Right? So maybe before we move forward on this, you know, on this notion that there is a $90,000 hole to fill before we do anything else, we should adjust that number. Because that'd be probably the, the biggest impact on the revenue side. And I guess I didn't, I didn't really, I don't know what the lag is between the time that, you know, the time that the mall up there stops collecting revenue and the time we, you know, stopped collecting sales tax and the time we get that. Is that a, is that a hit to our current quarter or is it a hit to next year's budget?
I believe, and Daddy's checking that, it's a hit to next year's budget. Because there, there, there is a lag. But just, just, you're, you're spot on with regard to on the revenue side. The biggest area is going to be, you know, the Orange County sales tax. On the expense side, obviously we've underestimated there because we have a 10K liability per month. And then we need to extrapolate out how long the situation will continue and forecast that because that's going to have a direct effect on the budget too. So to me, the two big levers are Orange County sales tax on one side, underestimation on the police budget based upon assumption that somebody would be returning to work who might not be. And that is a 10K a month hole to fill with part-time and full-time officers.
Okay. So on the sales tax, can we just, we should just talk about that right now, right? On the sales tax, it appears, whether it's this quarter or next quarter, we have this fiscal year, next fiscal year, it's going to affect our surplus if it's this year. You know, we can kind of figure out roughly, we could actually do a more precise analysis, right, by looking at the portion of sale tax that comes in. I'm sure around Christmas we get, you know, more than 1/12th for the month of December of the sales tax. But a fair assessment may be to just do it on a monthly basis at this point and assume it's going to be a three-month, a three-month situation where we, Woodbury Commons is closed or reduced. So that would be, you know, roughly, whatever, $25,000 reduction, roughly.
And what we did is when we originally did the budget, we basically took a month, a month and a half because we reduced it by 15K. And given events unfolding right now, I think we can all, all say it's going to be at a minimum three months probably. So, yeah, it's.
Recognizing that Christmas is, you know, more than, November, December are more than, you know, 1/6 of the revenue.
Right.
Because that, so, but I think on a concern. Because that, so, um, but I think on a conservative basis, 15 plus another 25 on a conservative basis. And we can get the actual numbers from Debbie about how, you know, percentage month to month. But that, to me, is another, whatever, 40, $45,000. Uh, sorry, not another, sorry, another 20, $25,000.
Yeah. So I mean, I I mean, we can play, we can play with that number and we can fine tune it and get, see if there is a seasonality element to it. And and then we we can refine it, refine it from there.
And then on the, um, the additional police budget of 10,000 a month, uh, I I don't know. I think that it, uh, it seems to me that the latest communication would be, um, would lead us to believe another four months.
Right.
Roughly, so that's.
I would, I would say that that that's fair. So we're talking 40K basically.
So 45, 40 plus 25, 65 additional.
Correct.
And and frankly, yeah. And frankly, I would want to include the, just so we're on the same page, I would want to include the booth construction in in the, um, and we can talk about whether it's 16,000 or maybe we peel back on some of the redundant equipment at some point. But I think that, um, that would be something that I would like to include in the budget as well. And we can talk about whether, how to get.
Sorry. So just to be clear, the $20,000, which at a board meeting, I believe in September, it had been agreed that the village would contribute towards that. That is factored into this year's budget, not next year's.
Right. Now, that's why I'm saying, that's an appropriation that I, I'm just laying that out, that I would like to include as well.
Right. And and my concern is, we've just bumped up our deficit to 275K for next year.
So and and my.
I mean, my, my personal view is, the only CapEx the village should be undertaking is some things that are mandatory. The DEC, yeah. We need, we have to deal with that issue. And we've made commitments to that issue. Everything else, I think, should be put back on the table because the world is not the same place it was a month ago. And that, that, that's my argument.
And just to, just to, not the last word, but just to counter that slightly. The world is not the way it's, you know, the world has definitely changed. We do have, this is a budget for a year. I'm hopeful that things get improved over the year. And we, and I agree, we can put it back on the table. And one of the things we might want to think about when it's put back on the table is that it's basically no, according to the budget that Mac resubmitted, it's basically no, um, village fees if you don't have the redundant equipment. And maybe the redundant equipment is something we push off. I I'm suggesting this push off to another time to be able to accomplish that. So that's just my opinion, and I just want to lay it out.
But I I agree with you, but the counterpoint or the adjustment to that is that we need to, given best case scenario, the the booth, if construction was set, sign off today, it wouldn't be done for three to four months. We don't have three to four months that our employees can be in unsanitary conditions. So we first have to deal with repairing the keep, making that a safe, healthy work environment before. So that's going to increase the dollar amount on the booth because some of the funds for the booth are coming from the unallocated restricted gift with regard to the booth from the land sale.
We can, we can just debate that.
All right. So.
So just going, if I can, going back here for a sec, just to to kind of refine some numbers. I'm, I'm just scratching my head over, why, why would we reduce sales tax a total of 40 off the 105? If, if the theory is that last year, I mean, were we on track to collect, absent this, absent, you know, this latest crisis? Are we on track to collect 105 for the year? Alan, do you?
The answer is, I do not know. Debbie has reached out to get some clarity on that.
So, so if 105 was our number, I I could see, and I sort of, you know, on a seat of the pants gut level, it makes sense to reduce that by 25, by the three months, forgetting about seasonality for a second. But I'm not sure why we would do it another 15 over on top of the. I mean, it seems to me that, you know, that the reduction there should maybe be 25, not 40 in total. Does that make sense?
Well, just, just as a curious aside, Debbie just texted me saying what we, our receipts are, they've been averaging about 26,500 per quarter. So there isn't a huge bump in seasonality effect, which is interesting. And I don't know if that's, they smoothed their revenue numbers out, so they self-fund themselves by doing it that way. But nevertheless, she's saying historically, it's 26,500 per quarter. So basis that, you know, do we take Paul's and just reduce it by 25?
I would be more conservative, and I'll tell you why I would be more conservative. I think that, um, we say three months, but I think there'll be a lag, there'll be a lagging effect before things go back to normal. So that's why, you know, you know, we, we're going to lose pretty much, I think that we're losing a month and a half for certain, right? Because I don't think, most people think it's, including the county exec thinks it's going to, you know, be essential. Woodbury Commons is not going to be open until May. So, um, at the best, and they'll be, people won't want to go there. And, um, you know, there's not international travel, there's a lot of international customers. So I don't, I think we should be conservative at this stage at least.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to say, with regard to the police, we're using a 40K number? And you wanted, you want to stick to 35, Maureen, is that what I heard? What number?
No, I, I think 25 off of the 90, right? Because you got the 15 already.
Okay, so additional 25. So we're, we're saying our, our whole not touching unallocated surplus is 275K. Agreed?
And you get that by just making sure, I'm just, I have the Excel spreadsheet in front of me, so I can calculate. You're getting that by taking the 4.091 minus the sales tax, the tax cap limit, and then adding the the 65.
Agreed, yes.
Alan, is it, since we have a public listening in on this, perhaps, does it make sense to you just kind of give a view of high-level summary of how you get that 275? How much you reduce revenue by and what expenses you've increased? So everybody knows what we're talking about.
I, I mean, the, the interesting thing is, you, you look at, you know, our, our police, Chief Coughlin, Conklin's done a very good job. I mean, his budget's pretty much, it was one and a half percent increase before this issue that we're talking about, which is the 40K, 40K issue. So, and that's not something of his own creation. You know, with regard to, you know, the DPW, DPW has held their costs. We have one employee retiring this upcoming, uh, next fiscal year. Coco Labar is retiring a, in October. Our assumption was, we would not be hiring summer help this year, but we'd bring in a new DPW employee into the fold and deal, deal with it that way. One, it gets them up to speed, uh, learns what Coco does. Two is, um, you know, I think we get a better quality of work, having a full-time employee versus seasonal employees. So I think there, there was a combination of things there. Jeff's biggest increase is a $20,000 increase in vehicles as a, as a result of wanting this new truck. The truck is expensive, it's, he's getting additional quotes, but it's around $175,000 just to frame, frame the issue. So it is a large CapEx. The current vehicle we has, have, has low mileage, but is old and, uh, is very well-used and rotten because it's the salt spreader. And we all know how corrosive salt is. Yeah. The good news is, our, our salt consumption this year is 50% of what it was last year. As a result of that, you know, we have to, in the government bid each year, take a set allocation of how much salt we want. Yeah. Paul and I remember going back, uh, I guess, three or four years when Mary Jo was mayor, we ran out of salt. And, uh, you know, we had to borrow and steal from other communities to get it. Now, now we have the other option is, we, our, our silo is full. We still have to take additional salt. We've gone back to the vendors and we're paying them to store it rather than bring it on-site and deal with it that way. So, yeah, our salt budget for the upcoming fiscal year is going to be reduced as a result of that. Obviously, we have lower energy prices. Yeah. Yeah. Otherwise, the budget really hasn't changed. I mean, we've, we've got personnel issues this year that are really going to drive things with regard to, you know, uh, at the village office. And then obviously, we've got the question of what's going to happen with the PBA contract? What's going to happen with the DPW contract? And, you know, the large increase that, you know, we, was the renegotiation of the garbage contract. That, that bumped up our numbers a bit that way, but that's something everybody in the village decided they wanted. And, you know, obviously, you don't want garbage put out on the street and then it becoming a hazard to wildlife and humans. So, yeah, there, there was a logic to there. So really, there's no fat. I mean, the big issue and, you know, a large dollar amount is going towards lakes management. What's the appropriate dollar spend and how we ma-manage the lakes?
So there's $60,000 of, of expenses and the police and the, and the truck. And but the real impact of the budget is, is the anticipated reduction of revenue. That's the point I'm trying to make. I think I, we need to frame it for people that we, that the, but the problem really is the shortfall in anticipated revenue. Am I correct?
Well, I, I'm not sure I'd go that far because just, just, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, a shortfall in sales tax, we're talking from 105 to $80,000. Our, our tax, tax base, where this year it was 3,774,000. Assuming we just go to the tax cap, it's 3,881,000. So we got 106,000 bump there. It's, you know, you know, where do we get hammered? Healthcare, retirement benefits, things like that, which, you know, really don't have control over, but are legacy costs that, you know, we, we're nibbling around the edges on the DPW and the police. And, you know, you know, a big question and a discussion we had with the chief, you and I had, Alan, was, do we need the license plate reader? That's an $11,000 expense. Do we get revenue as a result of that? Does it increase public safety? I mean, yeah. Originally, we put it in under the assumption that we would eventually evolve and that a residence, instead of having a tag on their vehicle, would have an electronic device so they could pull in, they wouldn't have to wait at the front gate, and they go in and out that way.
I was simply trying to provide a more overview, and this, this is fine, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say it's more expensive than reductions in revenues, frankly. It's, it's running, it's the cost of running the, these, as you said, like, sort of legacy costs and costs of running the village, you know, normal increases, et cetera. That's.
Yeah.
I mean, put another way, our, our budget really is only going from 4317, right? To 4377. Our budget's only going up a relatively small amount.
Sorry.
Is, the difference is that we, we fund a big chunk of that budget by overtaxing, if you will, in prior years. And we roll forward using some of that surplus in, in the next year. So last year's budget, we used $232,000, right? To keep our, to keep our surplus at 15%. This year, we are only going to be able to use maybe $120,000. So.
Gotcha.
That's, we're a lot of the difference. We can't, you know, we don't have the surplus to use to plug that hole. But our, our budget increase is a relatively small amount.
I think.
Point, yeah.
But I think that's a very good point. I think that's, that's some very succinct statement. Thank you, Paul.
That, that being said, we have a hole. Shall we briefly cover? I mean, you know, if you take out our, if you look at our CapEx expenses for next year, replacement police vehicle, I mean, it's, it literally is nearly a wash, given how much additional expense we had to pay maintaining this vehicle. So, yeah, we can delay that by a year. You know, with regard to the salt truck, I, I, I think the question is the safety of the employees in that vehicle. So that's a little bit more of a question mark. Phase two of the INI with regard to our DEC mandate, that, that's, that's, you know, in granite, so the real question is, lakes management expense, we bumped it up 10K this year. And, yeah, maybe it would be a good idea if we just kind of had a, a general discussion about that because we're still waiting for the water quality report from our lakes manager. But do you want to just kind of give a brief overview of this?
Sure. Let me just ask one last question on the price. It's a, what's, what is the, um, what does the new salt truck cost us in terms of? Because it'll be financed, right?
Correct.
So, so the yearly, next year's budgeted estimate for that would be, obviously not 150,000, it would be?
I, I think it was around 35K.
That, okay.
Yeah. It was that, that order of magnitude.
All right. So it's, 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 it's not spread over the entire life. It's just a four or five-year loan.
Correct.
Got it? Okay.
Yeah.
That, that's significant. I, I'm reluctant to kind of push that out further because we have that stuff every year. And all it does is, is push it off to another year when it doubles up with other stuff that, that needs to get done. But having said that, on, on to lakes management. So as Alan said, um, we, our budget last year combined, general and, and water was 140. This year, it's 150. I'll circulate, we're going to have a more extended discussion of lakes management on Thursday. And I'll circulate some, you know, some, some cost breakdowns and details so you can see the, you know, the, the, the matrix of programs, if you will, that we could, we can embark on. But, but basically, uh, for Tuxedo Lake, which is in the, in the water budget, we have, I think, about $48,000 left of that $100,000 budgeted that has not been spent. Now, remember, our, our treatment, um, year, if you will, our treatment period spreads across two budget periods. So it, it makes it a little bit challenging. You have to think about what you're doing in terms of treating for both and, and cover that in both your 2020 and your 2021 budgets. So there's a, it's, it kind of flows back and forth, and you have a little bit of control over leftover money in, if you will, in one year, actually, you know, gets, gets applied toward that, that summer's program. Right? As well as budgeting for the next year, it gets applied to that summer's program also. So, having said that, for Tuxedo Lake, of that $48,000 that's currently unspent in the current budget, we do have, um, we do still owe some money to our lakes manager. I think about $20,000 is still. Is that right? No, no, I don't think that's. But I don't, I don't have that. So there's money left over. So there's money left over that we still have to spend on our on our uh lakes manager budget. There's money we'd like to put in to cover a boom on Tuxedo Lake so that mill foil fragments don't spill over. And there is sort of a down payment on on next year's uh on on next year's treatment program if we choose to do that on Tuxedo Lake. And there's a variety of things we could do on Tuxedo's lake. In summary, and I can, you know, I can go through these in in detail, but uh the combination of the leftover money in in the 2020 budget plus what's budgeted for 2021 should be adequate to cover any of the treatment programs that we are likely to take. Now, that could be on Tuxedo Lake. It could be chemical treatment. Uh, it could be a limited dash harvesting of high use areas. Or it could be nothing. And of course, obviously, if you do nothing, it frees up some money in next year's next year's budget. The situation for the other two uh lakes, Pond Three and Weewaw, we have spent uh twenty-four thousand of the forty thousand, leaving a sixteen thousand dollar balance. We still owe for work not yet, you know, not not yet tendered, seven thousand to our lakes consultants, leaving about nine thousand out of out of last year's budget. That fifty thousand dollars plus the nine thousand dollars left in the, you know, in the in the balance in last year's budget and the 2021 budget would be at is intended to cover again a boom on pond number three so that fragments don't go from pond number three into the Weewaw Lake because Weewaw Lake is really a a I hate to use the term hotspot, but a, you know, a potential, the potential for mill foil growth there is is high if it's not taken care of early. We are funding our lakes consultant at a slightly reduced rate for for next year. The I think the program we had in place this year is about fifty-five thousand dollars. He thinks we can do make do with less next year, obviously. But there will be some additional input if we actually go ahead and do a robust lakes management program. So that's in there in the budget at 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 forty-four thousand, about half of what the the, I'm sorry, twenty-two thousand, the combined general and and water amount for about forty-four thousand. The treatment options for pond number three and range from fourteen thousand to twenty-eight thousand dollars. The Paul, that's included in that in that fifty thousand would be at the lower end of that amount, fourteen thousand. Alan?
Yeah. Just just so we are clear, this is pre-water quality results. So this is with regard to plant invasive plant management. Would you agree with that statement?
Absolutely true. So the so the numbers, the numbers, the one hundred plus the fifty there does not yet have anything in there for improvements, uh costs that might be recommended or related to water quality improvements.
Okay.
I'm sorry. And the last item that's in there on in the general is an allocation of of twelve thousand dollars for for dash harvesting mitigation for for the Weewaw. So the bottom line there is, you know, before we before we is that there is, the budget now covers the range of treatments that that we might do on on all three lakes. We could choose to do less. And and that's what we will, you know, discuss in part on on Thursday.
All right. So I guess the question at hand is, where do we go from here? Uh, I think we can obviously revise our budget and bump it or revise our deficit to reflect a couple of additional things that, yeah, we've incorporated to take it up to two hundred and seventy-five K. I guess. Yeah. Barring a significant tax increase, is there any any place we think we can get any material savings? You know, I Alan and I've had discussions with the the chief and, you know, we got savings in certain places and then, you know, we all of a sudden realized with the part-time officers, there had been a board resolution, I guess, three or four mayors ago that, you know, our our police officers weren't being given bulletproof vests. And all of a sudden, we're having to budget for that. And the chief's going out for grant money with the Department of Criminal Justice to get some grant money towards that. But, you know, it's items like that. I mean, I I really don't see anything that, yeah, if we gave came to and told him we wanted a mandate of a ten a ten percent reduction in his budget, that's, yeah, that's not going to happen. And, yeah, yeah, we're nibbling around the edges and I really don't think there is any fat there. So, yeah. What what do we what do we think we want to do? What CapEx projects do we just stop? What cap expenditures? Yeah, do we, you know, say no to a police vehicle? But, you know, that that's probably a five thousand dollar delta expense. I mean, yeah. What what's people sense sense and view on what what we should or want to do in this regard?
So just to sum it up, because I'm trying, I'm going through the numbers. Again, right now, based on the adjustments for the sales tax, right? We'd have to borrow to it right now, right? We'd have to borrow two hundred and seventy-five thousand from surplus.
Correct.
And if we borrowed, borrowed's the wrong term. If we allocate.
Marine, that's not, you have, in other words, you're assuming no tax increase above the tax cap, right?
Yes, sorry.
And it's 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 um right, two seventy-five, correct.
Right, and I'm gonna, I got the spreadsheet and I'm I'm gonna adjust it and I'll send it to you guys because I think it makes it look a little bit easier. But so it's two hundred and seventy-five. And if if we appropriated that much from the the from the surplus, the surplus, you said was seven forty-one, I think?
No, what what, Marine, what we had said is May thirty-first nineteen, it was six forty-four.
Right.
We're estimating that we will underspend by a hundred and twenty K, so seven sixty-four.
Seven sixty-four, sorry. So two seventy-five, seven sixty-four, right? Less two seventy-five. Just just with keeping within the tax cap. That leaves our.
Takes us down to four ninety.
Four ninety roughly, yep. And that is a.
Eleven percent.
Sorry?
That's approximately eleven percent, right? It's on the.
Right. So that's eleven.
Yeah.
Um, and the guidance from the controller is between what amount, what percentage? For you said fourteen percentage?
I I mean, we'd been working under the assumption the last couple of years. It seems that spectrum's ten to twenty, but the preference is certainly fifteen to sixteen. And just just so we're clear, you know, we said we're doing this project with regard to the INI. And, you know, we're going to do a financing, but we have to be careful that this doesn't negatively affect our funding costs too. But I mean, answer is ten to ten to twenty is what the controller previously has said.
Okay. All right, so I I was just trying to frame the issue in terms of sort of our we our ability, you know, the area that we can work in effectively.
Right. But just, I think historically, if you look at it over the last twenty-plus years, I think at our lowest, we got down to around three seventy-five on an ILK to surplus and our peak was a million two. So, yeah. To Paul's point, we were overtaxing people and we're at a million two. Now we're going into a very uncertain period with no cushion at all. And that that's profoundly scary to me.
Well, there's a there's an eleven, there would be if we borrowed, yeah, allocated for the surplus, there'd be eleven percent cushion. So a half a million dollars. So, okay. Yeah, I I I need to spend a little more time, unfortunately, on the budget and looking at the variance. Do we have any projection? If you remember, like when we were doing the booth budget, I did a little bit of a projection with Debbie you to get to the hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Do you have like a line item uh variance? Because that would maybe help us see where we're in. We have it, we have the variance. I can calculate the variance from year to date, year to over-year budget, but not year actuals versus projected budget, the variance. Do you have?
I went through it with Debbie, going at the things where we think there's a material, going to be a material difference versus things which appear to be on balance, the wash. So last, the last couple of years, we've done it this way and we've been pretty close to plus or minus, yeah, ten to twenty K, which is pretty good in terms of confidence factor. So, yeah. I I'm am I comfortable with a hundred and twenty K? I I would say, yes.
Right, but that wasn't, sorry. What I was asking, did you guys, and it sounds like the answer is no. You didn't do like a lot, Debbie and I sat down and did a line item thing, maybe.
As I said, that, sorry. Debbie and I did a line item, but I don't do it the way you do it. I I look at a material change, a thousand dollars here or there. I I just go go through it. They are washed out. I'm looking for things where there's actually need. I, you know, positive variance to the miscellaneous category, positive variance on the New York State retirement system, things like that, snow removal and the INI. You know, the rest of the stuff, the problem is, you know, we've got department heads and and it's slow getting all the invoices in. And, you know, however much you send the email, it's like rounding up trustees to sign invoices. Best intentions go nowhere.
Okay. Okay, so because right now, nothing, nothing in my view, nothing in my view, right now, is, you know, low hanging fruit. And that's obvious, right? Because you would have picked this. But so I can't, like, I don't know what our levers are here. I mean, our levers are go to eleven percent on the surplus, but but never, but the point is, there's a lot of uncertainty at the future in terms of potentially in terms of expenses, depending on how long this goes on and what ends up happening. Also, definitely on revenues, there's uncertainty. So that's one one approach is just, you know, live with the eleven percent and 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 adopt this type of budget. Or the other, I guess, approach is, you know, go through, well, we can always do the tax increase over the cap of two percent. But I I think none of us really, that's probably the last resort at this point, reasonable resort. We're gonna say.
Why why did you say that?
I don't think anybody really.
I mean, sorry.
No, 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 you, I think that people, it's never a popular thing to increase taxes, right? Unless you absolutely need to above a tax cap limit. And I think people feel that rightly or wrongly or inaccurately, that our taxes are pretty high. So any increases without sort of increased services is never viewed favorably. So I would try to limit within the, you know, the lowest tax increase possible, obviously. And if, you know, there's a tax cap that's supposed to give us guidance about how far we can go. So and that's sort of most places, you know, that's a tolerable level at two percent. Going over that is maybe less tolerable. Sorry.
I I and I guess, and I'm not sure I'm arguing that we go over, but I I would say the world's a different place right now. And there was discussions yesterday on the call at four o'clock that, you know, whether or not the governor will raise the tax cap and or eliminate it because there there is a new reality. I mean, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the first thing we should do is institute a CapEx freeze on all department heads. And, you know, everything has to have prior trustee approval on any expenditures over X dollars and see if we can ring any savings out this fiscal year. I mean, that should be the first thing I think we should do.
Um, yeah, I mean, yes. But again, this budget is supposed, I hear you. I think the diminution in revenues is not as dramatic, right? Because we're really talking about maybe forty thousand dollars, maybe sixty-five thousand dollars. Oh, but maybe forty thousand. Because our sales tax, the amount of money, what's in jeopardy in terms of revenues, right? You went through it.
Yeah, it's nothing. In the scheme of things, ninety-seven percent of our revenue comes from property taxes. And the great benefit we have is even if residents don't pay their property taxes, we're such a small community, the state covers it or the county covers it. So we're not in jeopardy of our revenue source. We're in jeopardy of, on a delta basis, forty thousand dollars on a four million dollar revenue base. So it's it's inconsequential, right?
Right. So that's what I'm I'm saying is that really the uncertainty is in terms of revenue appears to be fairly limited.
Correct. Sorry, completely agree, yes.
So, um, the tax cap, you know, the tax cap is not, what they were talking about in emergency management is that villages and towns that rely on substantial amount of revenues coming from sales tax, et cetera, for to meet their budget. That's why they were talking about limiting, ours is a different issue. Ours is that, yeah, sorry. Ours is that expenses, you know, are are, you know, set expenses are driving it. And and our other issue is that we've relied on the surplus to close the gap and never trued up.
Correct.
No, I think we true it up every, we sort of try and true it up every year. And that's the danger in in driving it down to ten percent. If you're if your baseline, and and I think it's probably an appropriate baseline is this is, I mean, the guidance I've seen, I think, was more along the lines of fifteen percent. That's probably the the right number and and sort of a gut level. It feels like the right number for an emergency rainy day fund for, you know, for a village such as such as ours. You could see lots of things that could go wrong that might cost a couple hundred thousand dollars that you need. So if you so if you're at fifteen percent and and you have one of those emergencies and and then that knocks you down to, you know, twelve percent or eleven percent, you then have to do, in effect, you know, a tax increase the following year in order to build yourself back up again. So I I'm not sure the desire not to do a tax increase or stay within the tax cap, right, is is that much more compelling to me than than making sure we have an appropriate budget with appropriate reserves to protect ourselves against exigencies as we go forward. But, you know, it's one thing if you're saying, well, you know, we it we, you know, we'll take another fifty thousand dollars to, you know, to, so we don't go above the tax cap. You know, that's a, that's an easy compromise to make. It it's another thing to say in my mind, let's let's drive our tax, let's drive our reserves down to, you know, ten or eleven percent. And and really have no, you know, you don't have the the ability to to make, there's no, there's nothing that's going to happen next year that's going to help us get back up to fifteen percent that we can see.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm not only saying, I'm not saying that we might not have to go over the tax cap. I'm saying I would prefer to leave that as sort of the the last resort. And I balancing, you know, again. And I, balancing, you know, again, a half a million dollar surplus, right? Which is basically one month's reserve, roughly, of the expenditures. Versus a, a tax increase. So I need to play around with the numbers a little bit to see. And, and then, and again, like, I trust you guys went through it. I, I just want to go through it again with myself to see the, and I know you guys went through it, the appropriations to see if, you know, there is some hard choice we have to make. You know, it's a balancing test, right?
Sure, and, and, and Lake's management might be an area where that, you know, there's some, there's some room in there potentially also.
Right. And again, like, and not to, and I know this is a hot topic, but I'm just going to say it one more time. I would like to see the budget, I, the mayor of the town, county executive basically said stop cap, stop capex now to conserve cash, to conserve your funds, right? Because you might not be getting as much sales tax. We're in a little different, this is a budget process for the future. So I would like to put in, we can't, but right now, it would be good to see, look, cross-reference our capital project and see what's, you know, absolutely crucial or very crucial to get included in this budget and see how that works out with a tax cap increase. Because delaying capital projects has been done for too long in this village and we're going to end up being in a real crisis scenario at some point soon. So that's the other piece that I'd like to factor in. But the one thing that I would like to consider is, is including the booth, since it's been on the table for so long. And it potentially, depending upon how we structure it, it potentially would be no expenditures from the, from the village if we could convince everyone that redundant equipment was not necessary at this moment, that could be built in over time, which is, in my view, a reasonable approach.
Right, so I, I, I would, my, my concern is we've got $20,000 allocated to that from, from our budget. We're, we're talking about not wanting, you know, what, what, this is a question of allocation of scarce resources. So what's more important to people? Do you want to spend $20,000 of the village money on Lake's management? Do we want to allocate it to the booth? Do we, you know, we haven't done anything with regard to the bridge crossing Pond Three and the Wee Walk, where we, we know there's concerns. I mean, we, our capex is incredibly light for next year. And, and the question is, are, are, are we allocating those scarce resources in the right place? And, and you know what? I, I obviously am exceedingly biased in what I think's the right place versus some other, the rest of you. But, you know, that's the discussion that we need to have and we need to bring to the residents and, and, and get it gelling in their mind, what they think are the most important things. And we know what we need to and have to do. And then over and above that, what we should be doing.
And so just.
That's the dilemma.
We also need to, we also need to factor in what it's going to take to address the, the keep issues that are among our more pressing issues because we have a Department of Health concerns in an area where we have employees working.
So, on that, can I?
Am I, am I being, am I being out of line?
No.
No, I mean, we, we had that issue and we know that issue because it occurred in December. I mean, it's, it is an issue. Whether or not the actions by the part timers, that was a catalyst for it, I don't know. But it, it's hard to believe it's purely coincidental either.
So I, I guess what I'm, I want us to consider is this. Is that the, maybe the solution to this all, because you don't need the keep as much, right? Is if you get the booth constructed. And Alan, what I'm trying to say about the $20,000 expenditure, that $20,000, it's roughly 16, whatever, but most of that 16, in fact, the cost, I think, was 18 when I looked at the budget last for the booth. The $18,000 of that cost, and I have to go line item, but $18,000 of the cost roughly is related to redundant equipment. And that we may be able to get, phase in over a couple budget cycles, the redundant equipment, such that the booth would not be any added cost to the village in this fiscal year. And so that's what I'm saying we should consider. And then that would solve the keep issue, unless I'm misunderstanding the usage of the keep and, and what has to be done, because no one would be sitting in there, they'd be sitting in the booth instead.
Now, I'm prepared to vote with a majority for the booth, however, if, if all the conditions are met. However, I'm not prepared to, to, to drop out and say, we're not going to have her done an equipment. I honestly believe that there's a significant chance that we build a, we build a booth that nobody's going to go into the booth. I think we have reached a watershed moment in the history. We are, we are, we are, we're trying to go back to the way it was. We're trying to go back to a, a very, a very friendly environment with gate guards that required a lot of social interaction in a world where social interaction is, uh, is gonna, is now prohibited. And once this virus stops, I think it's going to be still something that's going to be in our genes, is we're not going to go back to the way it were, was. So I think we have to say, there's a possibility that the booth is not going to be used in, in, in the world to come. And, and therefore, I don't want to be in a position where we have a booth without any backup and equipment in the keep.
And, and just to be clear, Alan, I'm not suggesting we don't do it. I'm just saying we do a little bit over time, we do the most important.
I'm saying we do it from, from day one.
Right, no, I get that. And I just want you to know, it's not, I'm just saying that, I'm not saying ignore it. I'm, I'm just saying it has to be, we make choices and that comes over time. Incidentally, not, you know, we, we said we would refer to the, defer to the experts and we didn't quiz the chief on it, but his memo did indicate that redundant equipment, he did not feel was necessary. But we did never, we never quizzed him on that.
Right, and, and just, just on that point, we never analyzed on it and it is a huge question mark whether or not we are going to be able to staff our police force. A, I mean, we're, we're taking it as word and what his belief is, but he could be wrong like all of us could be wrong. And if he is wrong, our, our cost of maintaining our police force could be completely different from the business model we currently have. And if we have to change our business model, we're going to have profound budgetary implications on the negative side.
Unless Paul can negotiate a really good deal with the PBA.
I have to say, I, I think Alan Barnett really hit it, hit it on the, on the nail for me. It's, it's, you know, the, 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 the idea of having the ability to operate from the keep is so integral to how and why project was approved that I think removing it would, would, has a good possibility of having the project just falter, you know, completely. So. It's, it's a, it, it would be a difficult road to go down, I think.
And Paul, and again, to be clear, I'm not saying eliminate it. I'm saying pick the items that are necessary, most important, and then defer the other items. So it's not a.
If, if we had to, let's just pretend for a moment, the booth with the, the cutting of the ribbon was, was tomorrow, April 1st. And we had the booth coming online, fully functioning on April 1st. In the present environment, we couldn't manage it. Because you couldn't, you cannot have social distancing in that booth. And you, yeah, that's not a room. You, every time the police had to go out, you'd have to wipe it down when the next guy comes in. But there, there, there are things now we've, we've said for the, in the way we're doing business as a nation, that, that, that would not be, that would not be satisfactory.
Well, Alan, in fairness, you could, you could, you don't have social distancing, you have one officer in there. The keep gets wiped down, I'm assuming, I'm hoping that was part of the plan. The keep gets wiped down after every shift, so as does the police officer cars. The only question in my mind is, are the vehicles that are coming up and asking for a direction, can they be six feet from the officer? And I think that could be accommodated.
Sorry, how, so you're saying that police vehicles come, vehicles coming up to the new booth would be six feet apart? That's an impossibility, given how narrow it is and, and the tolerance between the width of the car and the lane?
No, no, you, I, well, we can go test it, but I, I'm pretty sure, because you can, once you get to the gate, once the gate opens, you can go, go back in. But you could, you could keep six foot apart, six foot. I, I think that it, it accommodates, it's probably three, it's close to three feet, well, it could, well, I don't know, because it's not there.
Let me be really, let me be really clear. I'm prepared to vote for the booth, reluctantly, but prepared to vote for the booth. How, if all the conditions that we have specified are met. And to me, one of those conditions is redundancy of equipment. So if that's not met, before we access, before we vote, if that's not in there, I'm not prepared to vote for it, so.
Okay.
All right, that, that being said, we're talking about $20,000, which is less than 10% of our budget shortfall. That's the, the irony there. So, I, I, I'll re-ask the question. How do we want to move forward with regard to this budget? I hear what Marines' views are. Alan, what's your, your sense? Obviously, we're going to have to, just for prudent sakes, do a board resolution so we can exceed the budget, the tax cap and give us the optionality which we need. But what, what's your sense?
I would, I would, I would take half of it from the, from increased taxes. That keep me under the budget, budget cap, and I would take the other half from surplus. And that would, that, in my mind, leaves us at about, what, 13% of the, of 13% of surplus? It would take us to 590 in surplus, right?
Sorry, I just say, what, what you're wanting to do again? You want to, we have a whole of 275.
I take, I would take half of its taxes and half of them surplus.
But then we're going to exceed our tax cap.
Are we? What, what's the tax cap?
Tax cap's 3881.
I'm not, I don't, I don't follow that.
I, I, I'm not, we, let's be, we've got a deficit, we're forecasting our deficit is 275K, right? So you want to take?
Half of that. 137, is that right? 137 from the surplus. And at the end, the other one, and, and then raise the taxes by 137.
And, and raise the balance through a tax increase, whatever that tax increase may be.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I think that, I think we're now in an emergency and it's, it's proper to, to take some from surplus.
So your, your comfort factor is to have our unallocated surplus be around 13% of our budget? Is that a fair characterization?
Correct.
Okay. Paul, with, I mean, what's your?
When we say we're taking, just in that example, if you take 137 for surplus, we're just taking $17,000 more than our, we would, we would wind up with surplus $17,000 less than we had at the beginning of this year, right? Is that, is that the way the numbers are? Because we, we started with a certain amount of surplus.
Yeah.
We're saying we have $120,000 under budget.
Yep, you're, you're.
Surplus, we would be, we would use $120,000 toward that 210, or toward that 275 rather.
Yep.
Okay, so Alan's variation on that is, take a little bit more of surplus, you know, $17,000 more and, and have a tax increase for the, you know, for the balance. I think we can, um, I, I think if we take some, take the Lakes Management program and not do everything next year, this year and next year, there'll be some additional funding in that. And I will work that up before Thursday, to better be able to clarify those options. But I, I'm, you know, I, I, I guess, I guess where we are, that aside for the moment, I, I'm not disturbed by taking another $10,000 or $20,000 out of, out of surplus, one way or the other, but I, I would not want to go very much below our, you know, the, the amount we started with last year, which is an appropriate amount, about 15% of the budget, 14% of the budget. It starts getting much more concerning when you get to 13% of the budget. It's, it's not a, you know, it's not a, a, a place to go because you just, you just have to make it up in another year and leaves you less flexibility to deal with, with situations. So if, if that means a, you know, a tax increase above the cap of a modest amount, that's something that I would, that's something that I would, I would do as well. So if you were talking about $140,000 tax increase, what does that, what does that mean, you know, to our tax rates?
Well, I was just trying to figure that out. What is the, because I have the spreadsheet again. What is the, the formula for the tax increase? Is it last year times, times 102%?
No, it's, it's not as simplistic as that.
Nothing ever is, is it?
What, okay, is there, okay. So to, to do the, I mean, can, do you know how much 137,000 additional taxes ends up being from a percentage wise? I mean, if you did it the simple way, I could figure that out.
We'll do it the simple way, just, and, and if we're fundamentally flawed, we're consistently fundamentally flawed and then we can adjust accordingly, right?
One second. Well, okay, let's see, just go out one more. Okay, of course, if, if you take the 100 and, um.
How can that be?
No, I'm just, uh, that's, it doesn't make, if you take the real property taxes, divide, 137 divided by the real property taxes is 362, 3.62%, but that's not the right way of doing it.
Yeah.
You're going to do, you have to, 38881 plus 137, okay, hang on a second, divided by last year. 3881, 300. Sorry, the spreadsheet is not set up, it's an all in text, so I have to change a bunch of things.
But does it really matter at this juncture? We're talking theoretical, we can, we can get, do hard numbers basis this. I mean, I think right now, we're just trying to frame the issues. And to be honest, I, I think we need to, you know, take action items with regard to, you know, any appropriations over X dollars has to be approved by trustees, respective trustees who oversee different departments. I mean, we, we need to, you know, tighten our belts as much as possible because, you know, that, that's the only flexibility we have right now. Because what we're looking at is, you know, next year, it's really a question of, you know, do we take from Lake's management? Should we be doing the booth with $20,000? Should we be buying a police vehicle? Should we be buying an international harvester? And, you know, yeah, those are the only things we really can play with right now. Everything else, we have, you know, zero flexibility in. We can't change our business model with regard to the police force to make it more economic at the current juncture.
So, yeah, fair point. Just, I think that, again, I need the formula, but just, I think, if you take last year's real estate property. think, if you take last year's real estate property taxes and multiply that by 2%, right, that's $75,000. So to add another $137,000 to that, brings it up to 6%, but that, again, is the simplistic formula.
All right. So I guess, I guess the question is, do we adjourn this call? Oh, you know, it's food for thought, then we have the meeting on Thursday, hopefully the mayor will be in attendance, can give us his insight and input as to what he thinks. I think it's all pretty clear where each one of us respectfully is coming down on issues, and then let him opine, and then we'll adjust things accordingly and develop a consensus on what the correct and appropriate approach is. I mean, is that a good action item going forward?
Yep.
Marine? Can I hear you?
Sorry.
Okay. Sorry, you, you're in agreement?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right. Basis that.
Last question, Marine, where are you right now?
I'm in my little office in my house.
Ah, so the view behind you, the view behind you is a, is just a nice view, okay.
That's the Bahamas. I learned from Brian's, from the last meeting, how to do virtual backgrounds.
I got you. It's just disconcerting, your hair is blowing even, it's-
I know, people are saying that, it's, it goes in and out, the picture, because of virtual background.
Okay, gotcha.
All right.
Hold on, one second, please. One sec, I just want to try one thing here as the, as the host here, to see whether this works or not, if you don't mind. So why, can you go, right? Does anyone have their chat open?
Yeah, I just saw a chat from you, hold on a sec.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yep. Do you want to just go there?
I said hi.
Good, all right. So because the other participants, if any, on, on our meetings will have their mics muted, this will be the way that, that people can, can speak if they, you know, if they wish to be, and be recognized. So just wanted to make sure that works for, in preparation for next week?
Next-
Or next meeting, right?
Okay. Were there any participants on the call today, or not?
There, there were at the commencement, I believe.
No, I think that was Alan calling in audio as well.
That was me calling in audio, because you guys couldn't hear me.
Oh, there, there were about three, I thought.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we don't see them on, I didn't see them on this end, I would have thought, everybody should be on this, that's interesting, everybody should have been on this gallery, okay.
Excellent, well, yeah, is there any need, or does anybody have any issues that we need to adjourn into executive session for?
No. The only other thing before we leave is the agenda for Thursday's meeting, in addition to the budget. Can we, can we talk about and hopefully get approved the social media policy, so that we can get that out there, and the chief can come back to us to make sure his Facebook meets that policy?
So, so the mayor asked everyone to give their agenda items to Debbie.
Okay.
So if you just, I mean, that's, it's fine with me as well, so she will be sending out a notice this morning, hopefully for, for Thursday.
Okay.
At what time is it Thursday?
9:00.
And, and should, should we, Debbie should be participating on this if she can, correct, either by audio at least, right?
Yes.
I think Debbie's listening right now.
No.
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 Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I'm, and I'm sending an email to everybody.
All right. Basis, nobody sees any need to go into executive session, I'd like to close, it is 10:24, the first budget workshop. I guess we're going to have to, given we have a meeting on Thursday, though, we'll have additional discussions with regard to the budget on Thursday, and then we'll have to galvanize the budget, because I believe it's eight days prior to the 15th, we have to have a hard budget that we present to the public for the public hearing, and Debbie has to notice in the paper. So we need to solidify our budget as much as we can by April 7th, because we can't change it from the 7th to the 15th.
Okay.
All right. Basis that, I'd like, yep.
Well, before you do that, I just want to thank, I want to thank Alan McHugh, Paul Glock, and Alan Barnett, but I, I think a lot of the work was done by Alan and Paul, getting this budget, you know, going through the line items of this budget and getting it in as good a shape as it possibly can be at this point. Alan, again, I think Alan Barnett, thank you very much for all your comments and insight into everything. It's been a pleasure to work with you people.
Likewise, and I would just say, it's really Alan McHugh who, who pulled this.
Well, I, 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 I think, I think it's a collective approach, and I don't think we, any of us want to take credit for a $275,000 tax increase, but I do, I do think we need to face the reality of the situation, and, you know, then, then we can, you know, deal with things head-on, so I do think it's constructive in that regard. That being said, I'd like to close the budget workshop, it is 10:26 a.m., do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So trustee Barnett, second.
Who is the second?
Trustee Barnett.
Thank you.
And so, somebody will mention to Debbie that she could listen in or call in or whatever on this call.
I think, I think last time at the trustee meeting, she was a participant, wasn't she?
Yes.
Yep. So we should, in the future, we need to have her, ask her to attend as a participant, correct? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
However she feels, she can do it as, she would be a participant, she can do it by audio, depending upon what she's most comfortable with, audio or Zoom.
All right. And then we, we've got to sign off in the board of trustees minutes. We, we had to modify quite a few things from the last couple with regard to the board assessment reviews, but luckily, we caught that, so I think we should, at the next meeting or on the third Wednesday, we should approve the minutes.
Okay. You put that on the, you're going to tell Debbie to put, oh, she'll hear it.
So we are sort of conducting business after the conclusion of the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Goodbye.
Not to point a point.
Bye.
Bye.